Okay, good evening and welcome to the reorganizational meeting of the Newmarket School Board. Before we start, let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the reorganizational meeting is the one meeting a year that the superintendent has to call to order, and I will begin with asking for nominations for chair of the school board so I can turn it over.
I'd like to nominate Mike Kennison.
I'll second.
A nomination for Mike Kennison from Mr. Zink, seconded by Ms. McKinney. Is there any other nominations? Any discussion? Well, I guess we need a motion officially.
I'm...
We have a nomination, so someone like to move the question to nominate Mike as chair?
The motion to nominate Mike as chair.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to thank him for two years and all the lovely work they've done for us. I really appreciate everything.
Thank you very much. I can't quite find the words, but it's been a tough, tough, tough couple of years and you remain steady. You remain confident even though some of us got off the track recently often or periodically off the track. Your leadership was just spectacular, but I don't blame you for enjoying the respect.
See, no further discussion. All those in favor of Mike Kennison as chair?
I...
Aye.
Opposed? Absentee? Okay, motion carries. It's your meeting and we can switch seats.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and I look forward to the year, and we've got a lot to do. So we have agenda before us tonight. We need to elect a vice chair as well, I think would be the next order of things. So if somebody wants to make a motion on that?
I'd like to nominate Mike Kennison for vice chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Great, it's done. Next up is public comment. Does anybody in the public have anything they'd like to share? Going once? No? Okay, on to the superintendent's report.
So we just want to point out the board committee assignments is also on your agenda, so that's included. If it's not the board's pleasure to do that tonight, that list is in there for...
We could do it, or we could decide, everybody can take it home. I mean, I have requests and I don't want to upset Ingrid, but I'd like to go back to SST, just because there's a lot of changes going on over there, and I'd like to be part of it.
That's fine with me.
Thank you.
I'd like to go on the building committee and CIP.
And I serve on the teacher evaluation committee, and I don't mind doing that if nobody else wants to give that a try. I would be glad to do that.
I will do permission development if no one else is inclined to do it. Well, I guess it's district staff development committee.
And I will serve on the policy committee again.
Kim, you up for that?
I'm sure.
All right, here's always the favorite. Who wants to do budget? All right, I'll stay. But I do need a second.
Second.
You'll do it second? Okay. And are you going on the building committee as well?
I, yeah, I'll stay on that. That makes sense. After this, I guess, we'll make a motion to approve all these if we all agree, I guess, so. And I don't think we currently have a delegate to the New Hampshire School Board Association. Does anybody want to pick up on that? If not, I'll do it.
I think that it's a good idea, Mike, if you can do that, because I think it's an important one to...
Yeah, and the negotiation team...
To do the networking with other chairs.
Yep. I don't think we need the negotiation team right now.
You do, parents professionals and tutors.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Anybody interested in that? Takers?
I can go on that again. I don't mind doing that.
Al? Would you be interested in the negotiation team?
I didn't realize the parents and the tutors were unionized.
I have shared that at prior meetings.
I knew they were going to, they had petitioned us, but I didn't know that they'd gone through it yet. Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. So it looks like we have all of them covered, so...
So as chair, you can move this, Lee.
Yeah, and I move to, Jan, I don't know if you wrote all of that down.
I can give her mine.
I wrote it down. To move, as we just discussed, each of the board members into those various committees. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I guess not. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, so we don't have our student rep, but I can tell you that the junior high hot cocoa social took place on March 8th, and the chorus and band had their desert in a show concert on March 11th, which was well attended and well received. Probotics had their first competition in Bedford last week, finished, I believe, 27th out of 38 teams, and their next competition will be next weekend at UNH. The elementary PTA sponsored game of the Harlem Wizards this past weekend, and it is unplugged week, so tonight's science show is going on, and the family dance is tomorrow night. Just, and I'll explain why in a minute, but that has been relocated to the high school cafeteria. Coming up next week, UDL teams from our schools, our universal design for learning teams, will be attending their spring training in Concord, and we'll be starting the state assessment in April. April 9th is SAT day for all of our high school juniors. That is our state assessment for our juniors. I also want to acknowledge a hundred dollar donation from one grandmother, a student at our elementary school. Her name is Madonna Woods, and the donation is for the purchase of games for indoor activities at the elementary school. And then just to touch base about this morning's events, we had to relocate students in our modular buildings at the elementary school out of those buildings, because due to mud conditions, those geolos are continuing to settle. As a result, there are concerns, or there were concerns, that those doors would not open properly in the mud, which is a fire hazard. You have to be able to safely exit the building. So Principal Pine, Greg, and I worked with Sean Staff, who were tremendous in kind of working through those challenges this morning. Everyone was relocated into the building. We'll be working through over the next couple of days sort of the longer term plan for where everyone will remain, and we're also trying to open up the newer addition wing as early as possible. But given the fact that it's spring in New England and wet, jacking up those modulators, which is an option, doesn't seem like a great solution, and that they're still going to be on wet ground on cinder block for the remainder of the school year. You know, alternatively, you'd have to move them and pour slab or move them and throw down gravel, both of which are still going to be equally disruptive, because you'd have to fully relocate the students out of those modulators, move all of the stuff out of those modulators, take the modulators apart, shift them, take care of all of that and put them back, which includes moving electrical, plumbing, et cetera. So the best solution was to relocate students into the building, and so we've done that. Letters were sent home to all parents at the elementary school and specialized one to fifth grade parents, and we hope this is the last of the challenges presented in getting through construction at that building.
I thought we talked about putting a slab down. Because why? Because the other ones were taken off the cinder blocks, remember? Those also sunk in the mud, so that's why we did, those were condemned as well, but they were also 30 years old. So these are what, now six years old?
One is five years old. You just paid it off. The other one is over 10 years old.
Okay, so are they useless now?
No.
They're just condemned because they've sunk in the mud?
Because you can't open the exit doors appropriately.
So if those are moved up, put on trailers, taken away, somebody else can use them?
Yes, the RFP went out for that a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, I remember that, but Mike, I'm just, I guess I'm just wondering, we all, it's New England. I'm wondering why they just weren't, they were put in dirt when we kind of knew. All the other ones were in cinder blocks, like there wasn't something...
They are on cinder block.
In the cinder block?
Cinder block is sinking in the mud, and that recommendation was approved by our building inspector, through the building committee, through...
Through our building committee?
Mm-hmm. Yes, that was part of the process when the relocation was planned.
That was my question. I was wondering who okayed it.
So this issue was just realized today, so I guess that we need to probably look into this a little bit more, both in get back to the public, I think, on this in terms of, you know, working, as you said, Meredith, the plans for what we do for the rest of the year and going forward. So, you know, given this is a fresh issue, I think we ought to circle back once we know a little bit more. But, you know, I would like to know at some point, like, why they were put on dirt and there wasn't any gravel put down, because I just don't do that in New England, and I think we should follow up on that to understand better why, because we certainly didn't anticipate this, didn't want this to happen, but we're going to do the best to come up with solutions. And I think the new areas are open, what, in late April? Is that the target?
The target was for everyone to be moved by April 15th.
Yeah.
We're looking at whether or not we may be able to do that sooner, so we were already closing one of the modulators at that time.
Right. Okay. Any other discussion on this?
And the teachers can get their stuff. Like, it's not condemned, falling apart condemned, it's just the doors won't open.
It's not condemned. We are not occupying it for safety reasons, because for children, in the event of an emergency, we can't guarantee a safety risk.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, moving on to committee reports. Ingrid, anything from SST?
I'll have to let Meredith let you know on what happened at the last meeting, because I was not there. But I do want to let you know that in my backup mail was this invitation for the SST Small Business Showcase on the 3rd of April from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and I would highly recommend that anybody who can attend would be fascinated by what the students are doing and what small businesses are in our seacoast area. They did a tremendous job of it when I went two years ago, and it was great, and I was sorry I missed it last year. So if anybody needs the information, I have it, and I would highly recommend, especially if there are parents who want to know what's going on, sixth grade, seventh grade parents who want to know what's happening, eighth grade parents who want to know what's happening, and how to plan their child's education in light of what's happening at SST, this would be a great opportunity for you to see the facility, to see the students active in the program and...
I just, I keep hearing great things about SST, like, just not in this setting, but like, just being at the barber shop, hearing folks talk about their students' experiences. I haven't heard a bad thing about it.
Do we know who the principal is yet? The new principal?
I don't. I don't know if that came out. I know I was there just before I left, I think it was the fourth. I was there for interviews, but the Exeter District hires, not SST itself. So even though they had board members interviewing candidates, they make the final decision. So, yeah, to be recommended, and do you want to, was there something that you wanted to let them know?
Yeah, I put in for the April 4th meeting packet the draft tenure agreement.
That was...
Did you cover that, I think?
Okay, and then policy committee met Tuesday, and I have some tabs here on some specifics. If somebody wants to know some of the specifics of our rationale and things, but planning going forward, we're thinking that by June, we will have gone through all of the policies that are on the books, and so we will have done a full review by the end of this school year. And in the future, going, we would look at legislative changes in September so that we would bring anything that was a legislative change into use at that point and update it then, any local changes on request, and then we'd spread out the total of the policies over a five-year rotational period, so that any one policy would have been reviewed within five years. I mean, some of the ones we were looking at this time have been somewhere between 10 and 15 years since they were last reviewed. And generally, we deleted outdated policies. We made some language, some things to make it current language. And where there was a New Hampshire School Board Association recommended policy, and we had a similar one, we substituted it, and New Hampshire School Board Association regulated our recommended policy. And if there are other things that you want us to consider, let us know. We are on the agenda.
I just would, you know, like to thank you. We've said it before, but that's, if the public's ever seen our policy book, it's yea thick and maybe not that your first choice of reading. But, you know, it takes, and a lot of it's technical, and you gotta, you gotta compare it to close versions or close new versions, and also make some judgments, and really appreciate you having to do that with such speed, and hopefully we're on a good schedule going forward, it sounds like, so...
Many thanks to Meredith to know how much we could tackle at one time and what the related issues were so that we were, at any one time, we were looking at related issues and staying focused on a set area. And, yeah, it is technical. I was glad I had my teaching career of experience.
Yeah, and it's rough reading.
And knowing when some of these things that we've deleted, I was like, what? That's still in here? I remember when that went out. So, yeah, it was a valuable learning experience, and as I've said before, I would recommend it for any school, new school board member as their first year assignment to learn all those, learn about all those policies.
So we're saying the new sucker next year?
It's just helpful to just really, and look at them, sort of, one of the benefits that we've had is looking at them all over the process of time, you know, seeing that the same concepts are in multiple sections, depending on who the audience are specific to. So it's just very interesting to look at all of that in that and understand, you know, more of what we're supposed to do.
Who else was on the committee?
Me.
Just the three, just the three of you?
Yeah.
Ah, wow.
That's why. That's why I had such a big pack. This was Tuesdays.
So moving on to the...
Budget committee's meeting for the first time on Monday, the 25th. If anybody wants to go, it's always a good time.
Then the building committee met on Tuesday. It was a brief meeting, because, you know, in short, things are on schedule, or I should say, a lot, in a lot of instances, ahead of schedule. I'm going to mess up some dates here, but the school, elementary school kitchen will be online here in April, and the high school kitchen, end of April, I think. That's the idea.
April 8th, the elementary school kitchen will be up and operational, and when the students return from school break, the high school kitchen will be up and operational.
And then the, as we just heard, the newer addition will be online at the elementary school this month. And I want to thank Al. He and I traveled over to Concord on Monday to speak in front of the legislature. We waited for three hours to talk for three minutes. It was the finance committee meeting, and we both put a word in for bringing back school building aid, and which is, you know, there's been a moratorium since 2008, and also to make it retroactive, so Newmarket may be, you know, hopefully eligible for that. We have no idea where it's going to go from here. There is some support in the legislature. The governor's made a proposal, but it's in the early stages, but I just want to thank Mike Cahill, our representative as well, for working hard on this and sticking to it. I think that's it for reports. Greg's sitting there, I'm looking at you. Is there any way we could move him up? And Jason too, if they want to?
And probably Cassandra first.
Everybody's in that boat.
Yeah, we'll let Cassandra go first.
Okay, yeah, let's do the, if everybody's okay with that, let's move that up. Yes?
But I don't know, can you move your microphone closer, Mike?
Sure.
Thank you. I don't know that Cassandra needs to say anything further unless the board has more specific questions for her. Included in your packet was the draft job share policy as requested, and really, this was the board's request to table that, so it's really in your court. And I just want to add that June is ill, that's why she's not here.
I did, just, I looked at the policy myself. I thought it was fine, the way it's written. There was one typo that I think was self-evident, but with that, I would, I thought it was fine.
Yeah, my only question was, I think I'm reading this, that policies consider any job share proposal on a case-by-case basis, or if a nurse wants to job share, or a secretary, or a power, they're covered as well.
Yes.
Well done. I like it a lot.
Yeah, as we heard last time, it's almost, it's kind of impossible to make a policy that might address, you know, in every situation, because they're all, you necessarily have to look at them one-on-one. So, and at least to me anyways, the one that we heard about last week made sense. There was a motion pending on that, and I know this is a first reading of the policy, so we'll have to read it again before adopting it, but would that, I don't know if that would prevent us from acting on that motion, that if somebody wants to, maybe, if somebody wants to renew that motion to approve that job share, I'll...
I'll renew the motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
You're welcome.
Oh, thank you.
So how should we go? Your seniority or age or...
I will let...
He's got a longer ride on.
Okay, let's do that. Greg?
Oh, hey.
Are we taking the sign first?
Let's do the sign.
Let's do the sign.
Sign it?
Sign.
At the last meeting, the board asked me to get feedback from our public works director, our police chief, and code enforcement officer, which I was able to obtain. We asked them three questions of basically the three different locations for the sign, and we have basically three different responses, so. Our public works director said he preferred to stay basically where the original sign was supposed to go. Our police chief would prefer option number three, which was to put it out in front of the new parking lot. And our code enforcement officer didn't per se weigh in on anything other than making sure that the sign met the flashing requirements and ordinances.
And am I right that the school resource officer and the principal wanted option two?
Correct, from our last discussion.
No.
No, no, no.
On the line of free health cuts.
Yeah, so...
So option two?
So option two was our resource and principal. Option one is our public works director. Option three is our police chief.
Greg, and if I recall from before, option one has the least financial impact because of the, and then option two is 7,000 approximately, and then option three takes us to 8,000 dollars to put the sign in.
Correct.
I think one of the things that, when we discussed this at the last meeting, that struck a chord with me was Al's point in favor of having it on the parking lot side of the street, sort of making it a campus situation and really acknowledging the fact that the campus is on both sides of the road. I had about 30 minutes sitting in the car waiting for my daughter this afternoon, and I was looking at all the spots, and one of the benefits on that side is that it's on the opposite side of the road when people are coming into town, so it's not, you're, they can be distracted, it's not close to the walkway, and on the opposite side, it's beyond the walkway. So, you know, I think that it's my favorite spot, but...
What option?
Option three is my, option four is...
Across the street?
Across the street. I mean, I acknowledge that it is the most expensive, because we have to move the power to that spot, but, you know, I'm, I just, I don't know, so I feel...
Yeah, and I feel the same way. I think it just, it gives some breadth to the, breadth to the locations.
It's a campus. You said it last time, it's a campus.
We're not always looking at the school.
Yeah.
And I'm looking at a picture of the height, I mean, the sign itself, not counting however much that faux brick is below, is five feet, seven and a half inches. Sixth and seventh graders for sure are going to be below the top of that, and I come down that street and I look, I used to teach sixth, except for the eighth graders. If they're walking out and they only have a few steps to the street after they've come past that, it's scary to think how much lead time somebody might have, just because a child would step behind them.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate what the principal and Officer Stevens has to say, but I'm, Mike and I were out there waiting for our kids, and we walked around, and I like option three. I like the fact, I liked what Al said. I like the campus feel. And I also appreciate what Chief Tru said. I don't want people going in that.
Yeah, that was a point, and when he wrote that point, if not people feeling like maybe they could enter the bus loop, it was something that I hadn't even considered. Obviously, I don't have the safety and security training that he has by any stretch, but it was a different perspective that I had.
That thought mine, maybe we can get like a vicious dog.
No, no, a vicious mule.
A vicious mule, yeah.
Bearing its teeth.
Yeah, there we go. Um, so I, I, I agree as well. So I think we have consensus. Do we, uh, let's, let's move for that, please.
I seek a motion to place the new sign on option three, which is across the street from the building.
Second. Any more discussion? If none, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Done.
Um, and then just a thank, thanking again to Mr. Hamel for making the donation. I made that all, all happen. That's, uh, pretty incredible, so.
It's gonna be a nice sign.
Yeah.
And Greg, thanks for doing all the planning and...
And others.
Not a problem.
And surveying of folks.
I had forgotten that totally.
Yeah, and, and as Greg noted to us, that placement will be delayed by about a year because the areas still be used for storage and construction, so that won't happen probably till next spring.
Right, we'll be, we'll, we'll probably put the RFP out for the, for the electrical and the sign. Um, I would, my guess is probably right around...
Tainted?
Yeah. Um, although I want to try to be able to make sure that the sidewalk is not paved, uh, next to the art building so that we're not cutting out a brand new sidewalk and try to get that in place, so.
And, uh, next is the lighting, I think?
Yes.
Yes.
So, uh, again, uh, the board had asked me to kind of expand on different options and more information regarding upgrading the lights in the school to LED. So, what I did is, is I, I came up with several different options, uh, as well as pros and cons, which was also requested. Uh, so I came up with, uh, one option, which would be a ten-year note based at four percent with an annual payment of fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents, um, with a, a guarantee return of fifteen thousand and fourteen, uh, forty thousand in rebates. Um, uh, cost of the loan over life was a hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. Um, and we would be short annually six hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents based on those figures that I have at this moment. We haven't shopped the interest rate yet, so that could be, uh, change. The next one is, again, same interest rate, uh, same annual payments, but this option here is to turn around and look at, get the lighting done now, get the lease to pay for it, and then in your budgetary, in our budgetary process, look at paying off the note, uh, as part of the budget, um, which would allow us to, um, basically take the first year savings, or it could be two years savings, and then pay off the note so that we're not going into the future with the note.
And that would secure us the rebate because...
That does secure the rebate, yes.
If it disappears, we avoid that risk.
Correct. And the last one is, uh, a no-lease option, which is basically us paying for the entire project upfront. Again, rebates and, um, uh, the fifteen thousand, uh, is, is still there. And actually, I'm sorry, it was four of them. I'm sorry. The last one was not to contract with our energy auditor, um, and, uh, look at what we can provide for savings. And, and we actually got looking at that and I got some numbers from them. The, the actual savings, uh, is, is approximately, um, sorry, I have to give back to a hundred and sixty-nine thousand to a hundred and fifty-three thousand, uh, or about sixteen thousand dollars in, in savings to us if we manage to process ourselves. Um, again, it, it's still, the still potential costs are the same that we would have to either finance or, uh, pay for it upfront, um, but the cost output is slightly less, uh, for us to, uh, cover. Uh, I also gave pros and cons that was requested, uh, for each. Um, all of them have obviously more pros than they have cons because of the overall, uh, item except for option four. Um, we do lose the guarantee energy return, turn on that. So if we don't realize the energy savings that is supposed to be there, we have no recourse. Um, the energy savings guaranteed for one, two, and three are in place. Um, unit pricing, they are able to buy the lighting fixtures cheaper than I can buy the lighting fixtures, so that's some of the thing, and it has to do with just the sheer volume of purchasing power that they have over us. Um, they have, we will not have to deal with disposal of universal waste, so all of our fluorescent lamps have to be disposed of and we have to hire a company to do that. We cannot throw them in the dumpsters, so we do have a, a pretty good cost every year. It varies. It can be two thousand one year to five thousand, I think is the highest I've had, uh, to get rid of the old lamps and the ballast. So if there's any PCBs in our ballast or getting rid of the lamps, it is all covered in, in options one, two, and three. We do not have that, uh, pro, it's, it's a con to us in, in option four because we will have to cover that, that. Um, the, the, they have a, a guarantee, layer bid guarantee, um, for one year. Uh, lease two does provide, uh, our option two does provide an annual quicker savings, so if we finance and then pay off the financing ahead of time, we realize those savings at a, at a much quicker rate. So the fifteen thousand dollar savings, if we don't have a note going against it, is fifteen thousand on the bottom line. So that, that actually has some, um, some pluses to that that the others don't. Um, the option one is our highest cost overall for the project because you're gonna realize, pay for the, uh, financing over the entire length of it plus the, the, uh, difference over the prior length. Um, option two, again, has that same piece, um, but it does have that hundred and ninety, and this is based off the first year payoff, so I need to qualify that. If we go to two or three years, that number changes. But if we go one year, the projected payoff is a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and one and nine cents, um, which i- is a, is a, a cost for a single fiscal year. Um, option three, uh, again, that goes to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand because we get the first year payoff, pay down, which actually offsets some of the cost out of pocket. Uh, and four, uh, we, we cannot do a lease on this because the leasing company will not give us a lease without the guarantee return. So we'd have to go conventional financing with it and the, the rates are a bit higher with the conventional financing than they are with the leasing. That I got initially quoted. Again, we have not put it out to bid yet, uh, so the actual finance amount. I was quoted three point nine nine. The last ba- uh, financing we, I did, which was on the town side, was four point two seven, uh, but that was also, uh, one point two million on a twenty-year note.
So Greg, just a few things that I know you've covered these in parts at different times, um, factually. Would, um, if, uh, we went with a leasing option, could that work be done this summer? Would that, or is that...
If, if we engage in this now, I have a commitment from EEI that they'll be able to do it this summer.
The, everything?
All the lighting, yes.
And, um, do we know, uh, when, uh, the rebate is available to? Is it annualized? Is it...
The rebate right now is available to us. Um, they have a fiscal year change and they have a, believe it or not, a s- a September change, and I'm not really sure why they have potentially two, but that's the changes they have right now. Um, we're waiting on some that are supposedly coming back too on solar, so, um...
So, uh, for one thing, since we didn't budget it this year, the, um, paying it upfront this year can't be done, right? Um, if we don't do it this year, we'd be better with the increased efficiency and frankly, the better lighting in, in a, you know, we'd like to be done, you know, substantially, I would think, for the elementary school. Um, and we may lose, if we don't do this now, or we may not lose, we just won't know, uh, the rebate of, of, of forty thousand, which is almost twenty-five percent roughly.
Yeah, unfortunate, and, and there's no way to know that upfront for us, so...
Yeah, you just won't know, but we know we, we could have it right now. What, uh, option number three kind of appeals to me, um, because it's something that we can, uh, secure the rebate, um, get the work done this year and, um, hopefully budget it next year to pay off, or you can also do it over multiple years, you know, depending on what we'd want to do, um, what, what needs we have come next budget season.
See, that's what I'm worried about.
We could pay it off all at once. We could pay it off, you know, but...
Yeah, and, 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 basically, the, the, the thought process, at least in my idea, was if we do the, do it now, get the lease covered this year because we don't have the ability to pay for it right now, we get those savings immediately. We get that fifteen thousand. Our exposure for, per year at that point is six hundred and seventy-two thousand, twenty-seven dollars.
It's not six hundred and seventy-two thousand, twenty-seven?
No, no, six hundred and seventy-two, six hundred, sorry.
That's different.
Apologize, that's a big difference. Six hundred and seventy-two dollars. That is our exposure above the rebate. So if you even go to the year two, it's a twelve, thirteen hundred dollar exposure comparatively. So I think, in, at least in my mind, the risk is a small exposure if we have to finance it for a couple of years.
In, in the savings, um, this is, this was my question from last time off of doing it ourselves versus, this is, is, is only sixteen thousand, I think you said?
And then half that could be...
Fifteen thousand is the projected savings, yes.
Well, and it's...
And there's no guarantee.
The waste is...
If we do it ourselves, I, 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 we don't get a guarantee.
The net is probably less.
Well, the waste disposal isn't in here, so you can have sixteen grand up in a heartbeat.
It is not.
So I think four is about, I'm...
Four I crossed out.
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm...
And three scares me because I just don't want to commit to a hundred and thirty thousand coming out of our budget right now. We just don't know.
Well, we can't do that now anyways. We would have to wait. I mean, that, that's not a, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a possibility, is...
Potential, too.
Yeah.
And I think it makes sense.
Yeah.
Two's a really, um, one and two are the two options that you could do now. One is basically paying it, taking it for the whole term of the loan, which is ten years. One is...
Which...
If you get the money ahead of ti- we can pay it off early.
Yeah.
And then realize the savings ourselves a hundred percent from that point on.
So option three, Elizabeth, doesn't lock us into paying it all out of next year's budget, but it's just, this is an illustration. If, is it, if we did that, that's...
If we could do it, okay.
Roughly the, the numbers, but you could also, you could break it down many different ways. You could pay it out over the next couple of years or however...
Which would be basically option two.
Um...
Right? That's just paying it basi- I know what you're saying. I'm with you.
Yes, aren't we talking option, I might have misspoke.
No, you, you, you're right. I'm just, option three and option two could just kind of be one.
So, um, are we ready to make a motion on this tonight? People want to think about it more? I mean, um, Greg, we probably...
We do have a timing issue that will come up on us pretty quick.
I'm, I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, select option number three for the, uh, lighting installation project in the elementary school.
What, option number three is you're gonna pay a hundred and sixty-nine thousand.
Right, that's, that's what I think the confusion is.
I think I can, I confused you.
Trying to pay it all.
I'm sorry, option two.
Option two, that's the one I had in mind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's the option just to, that's the option with us financing the project and with the thought of trying to pay it off in future budgets.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll do, I'll second that.
And, uh, just again, that work would be done this summer?
And again, I do, I do want to, the only thing I, I do need to, and I guess I'm mentioning it twice, we don't know what the final interest rate is and we don't know the exact rebate, so these numbers may be adjusted slightly as we go forward, once we know where we're gonna be sitting.
Okay.
Is there any significant change or...
I've, actually, once we're done doing the request for pricing, I will be coming back to you for the authorization to, to approve the financing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, say.
I, I'm going to.
You're next. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Greg.
How is everyone?
Good.
All right, so we have two, two things to go through. First one is, um, an RFP that I put out back in February for all of the cabling, wireless access points, network switching, and battery backups for the addition renovation. Um, I think we're adding five new wiring closets, fourth at high school and then one at the elementary school, so expanding our infrastructure in network quite a bit. Um, so we went out to bid back in February, out there for a month, and we only got three responses. Um, one was TNT for the network cabling, Gov Connection for network firewalls, and then OMADA for all of the networking gear and battery backups. Um, I'll stop here. Any questions? I know you, you probably had a chance to look through the memo, the, the cost breakdowns.
You said you probably got three, but on network cabling installation, you've got one, one bid, or is that your recommendation?
So, one bid.
So, so we had one bid on each?
Correct. Yeah, the only, the only thing where we ended up with two bids was on the battery backups. And that's after twenty-eight days. That's posted nationally on, on the USAC website.
It's a small job, relatively speaking.
Yeah.
They're a known vendor for us. I, I think the pricing is fair. Um, Jason's done a lot of research. It's, it's, um, it's in line with the estimates that we put together in putting together the owner costs for the project. I, I feel okay with it.
Then I do, yeah, okay.
So maybe we can, you have one other item, too?
Sure, any questions on, on any of the staff? Oh, sorry, I should point out the, uh, the best part of this, it's E-Rate eligible, right? So, which means we'll get about fifty percent back on that. Um, the stuff for the elementary school, it's a smaller job, less switching, less wireless, less cabling. Um, so we may not see that full forty. Um, some stuff is eligible for both buildings, so we'll, we'll get pretty close. That's why I said between sixty and eighty thousand dollars return on this.
So Jason, you could put us all on the spot as to what this all means to, to, to the, to the, to the user, to the user. Could you refresh us and just, just so, um, you know, we in the public know that this, this is gonna do, this is gonna be higher speed?
Actually, it is. So part of, the new switching's gonna be ten gigs as opposed to one gig right now, which is kind of the new standard. Um, that's between our closets. So, yeah, faster network, newer gear, more reliable. Um, that's just the network switching. Wireless is pretty much expanding on what we have. We are changing up our model of deployment for access points where we have one access point in every classroom. We're one-to-one now. We have twenty-five devices in a classroom at a time. So before, we used to buy bigger APs, bigger access points, stagger them throughout the classrooms. Now, we'll buy a smaller device made for, you know, twenty-five to forty devices.
Works better.
Um, yeah, better density, better signal.
It could even be fifty if you think each kid has a phone. Plus the phone box.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Hopefully they're not on the phone, but...
That's what I said.
Oh, my God.
Unless for education. So, um, that's for the wireless, the firewalls. Ours are ready for a refresh. They're about five years old. Um, same thing there, ten gigabytes as opposed to one gig. Um, and then the battery backups, boring, but, um, necessary. So all of our closets are backed up, all of our switching, wireless phones. So when we do have that power surge, if the power goes out for fifteen, twenty minutes, we're, our network's staying up, wireless internet phones, so. Safety and reliability. Um, and then the network cabling, we're gonna do, because of the, obviously, new cabling in the additions, but for the renovations, we're pulling out all the old cabling, which is CAT five, CAT three. It's, some of that cabling's probably fifteen years old, so we're gonna do CAT six throughout the building. New cabling, less cabling than what we have now and nice and neat. I don't know if you've ever seen in the ceiling at the elementary or existing junior high, it's pretty messy, so.
I mean, and that probably creates a problem if you're trying to diagnose a, an issue, you...
Yeah, it can. It, it can. Um, TNT's been working in there so far and doing a great job. The, the, all the closets look amazing. They're done professionally and they're doing a great job.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Can, did you want to do both?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we'll jump to the next one.
Yeah, go through both.
So the next one, this one, this one just snuck in. Um, I posted this RFQ, March fourth. Um, we just got responses back Tuesday. So this is for the new elementary school classrooms, projectors and audio solution. Right now, we have the overhead projector in the classroom. Um, so we're basically doing that same model, except it's gonna be a short throw projector. So when the teacher walks in front of the whiteboard, their shadow's not gonna block the image. Right now, we have the overhead projector in the classroom, um, so we're basically doing that same model, except it's gonna be a short throw projector. So when the teacher walks in front of the whiteboard, their shadow's not gonna block the image. They'll be able to, you know, display without disturbing the image. We're also doing
How does that work?
It uses, so it's probably, it probably mounts two, two and a half feet off the wall, and it just has a mirror in there that projects the image down.
They don't physically get in front of the image?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, there's no, no disturbance, so. This, we were looking at, so I'm putting, putting together a team at both schools, one at the elementary school, one at the junior, senior high, to look at some different AV solutions. This one kind of snuck up on us quick, and because of the dry erase boards that were already purchased and set to be mounted, we ended up going with a short throw projector. They're still, you know, they're, they're brand new, um, Salem School District, this is what they put in every classroom. They're adaptable, too, so if we want to use smartboards down the road, we can install a smartboard in these classrooms, as opposed to buying a LCD panel without interactive features. You couldn't add that later on, so this gives us some flexibility, and, again, the short throw's the, the newer style of projector. We'll also have amplified speakers in there, so if the teacher wants to just plug in a Chromebook or a computer and not use the projector, they'll be able to get some, some good audio throughout the classroom. Three bids on these as well, um, and these were apples to apples. CCS we've used before for a few different, um, integrations, installations at the school. They came in low bid, and again, same projector, different speakers between all three vendors, but, um, pretty much the same solution. And that, CCS is the recommended vendor for this. Includes installation as well.
Does, is there, uh, like a warranty and all that stuff?
So, projectors are covered under a three-year warranty, and CCS, I believe they do a one-year upfront. Most of the, so in the past, uh, the guy that works for me, Chris, and myself, do all these installations. We're doing everything ourselves, this is nine classrooms, and just time-wise, we can't make it happen, so.
Right.
Otherwise, but most repairs, the, the bulbs on these Epson projectors are forty, fifty dollars, as opposed to in the past, you used to pay, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars for a bulb, two hundred and fifty bucks, so.
Okay. So light loss track, the first one was one seventy-nine, seven hundred is the total?
Correct, yep, the three different vendors.
The other is
Is twenty-one, three.
Ah, okay. Okay, so, um, seek a motion, um, for approval of the bid by CCS Presentation Systems in the amount of twenty-one thousand three hundred dollars, and also in the total amount, uh, um, uh, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand seven hundred dollars for the, um, TNT Connection OMADA, am I pronouncing it?
OMADA, yep.
Proposal.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Good job.
I always appreciate the research that you give us, it's always very thorough, so thank you for that, so always.
Thank you.
And the hard work that you and Chris both do.
And the explanations that you
Hopefully it made sense.
Yeah, it did.
And that's, that's one of Jason's great skills, is simplifying some of the complex.
Yes.
But please also understand, this has been a very complex process, going back almost two years now, really, from starting to work on this. Working through the E-Rate process, working through the projections, working through the mapping of where all of, all of these devices were going to be located, what we needed for devices, so this is almost the culmination of some of that work, you'll get to see it all again for the juniors and your high school, but Jason spent a lot of time and effort into that stuff, so I appreciate his skill.
Yeah, we'll do it, tip of the iceberg.
Yeah, this is exciting, so April first, we'll be able to order this gear and get it onsite, and this is, all this equipment here is what's gonna run all the new additions, um, in the renovated areas, so. Pretty exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah, seeing the stuff, you know, we, we planned it out for so long, actually getting, pulling cable and racking equipment is, is exciting, so.
Thank you.
We have a, a motion, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Jason, could you please tell Chris that the website looks great?
I will, yeah, he's pretty pumped about it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Going back, we, one of the discussion items was graduation parking.
Yes.
Yeah, item D, Kim, do you want to give an?
Sure. Um, the screening committee has been meeting this week, um, and the goal is to have, um, a set of candidates to the school board by next, early next week.
Okay.
And many thanks again to the committee, they have spent countless hours working on this project and have been very thorough with it, and it's greatly appreciated.
And you're perfect attendance, very good.
Yeah.
Anything else on that front? Okay, um, moving along to, I guess, graduation parking, um, as a discussion item.
My one, I just want to, I think if we start talking about it now, people can start listening to it, we need to figure out where they're going to park, you have grandparents, handicapped, accessibility, so we just, I, my thought was, how are we gonna do this?
I can answer that. We're already gonna have additional parking at junior, senior high, because we expect the upper lot to be available by then, um, as we've been talking about since last year. The one across the street will still be available, there'll be designated handicap spots. We also, as we suggested last year and have in the past, suggested people use the elementary school. It's a relatively small senior class, um, and, you know, police will be on hand as they always are for those events, so I, I don't have particular concerns. Again, we'll designate handicap spaces, I believe, last year, because we had similar challenges. At the time of graduation, the principal put a note out just asking if people had particular needs for handicap access to let him know in advance, so that we could make sure to reserve enough spaces, um, for that purpose.
So one, one thing, um, got missed a little bit tonight in the facilities updates, is, um, the site work's gonna resume at the high school, hopefully around April first, okay? And, uh, probably paving up that entire back of the high school by the end of April, so that area should be available, right, Meredith?
Yes, yeah, that's, yeah.
So, in addition, obviously, to Yeah.
Right, so I, my thought was, we start talking about it now, so people can prepare themselves, which is why I like to have these public discussions.
Actually, in terms of volume of parking, there should be much more than in years past, with that in place in the lot across the street.
And again, the elementary school.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, um, so we have approval of minutes, that's the next item, um, from our March seven, uh, two thousand nineteen regular business meeting, does somebody want to make a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion, changes, if none, uh, all approved? Say aye.
Aye.
Then the next thing is, uh, we looked at last time, the school year calendar, and it's in our packet as well. Are there any questions, further comments on the school calendar?
None.
None, okay. Meredith, anything further on that?
I shared, um, feedback that we had received with you at the last meeting, I've not received any additional.
Okay. If nothing further, can I seek a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year calendar?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, if none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And Elizabeth, could you do the manifest?
No, I don't, no, I'm too tired.
Your manifest.
I seek a motion to, uh, approve the total of all manifests of two million six hundred eighty-one thousand twenty-nine dollars and four cents.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So that appears to be the end of our agenda, I, um, just go over a few scheduling things, um, that are at, at the bottom, our next meeting's on April fourth. And, uh, you know, we're having a joint meeting, so we should keep, that's not a regularly scheduled meeting, the town council on April tenth. There's some other dates on the bottom of your, of your agenda, we should just keep in mind as well. I don't have any reason to go in a non-public tonight, does anybody else, no? If not, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Did you say the budget comes on the twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.